Good evening and welcome to the City Commission Meeting. This is our regular meeting day. It is Wednesday, November the 19th. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for the roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Wilson here. Commissioner Mike Mitchell here. Commissioner Rocky Smith here. Commissioner Adam Marle is absent today.
And excused.
And excused. Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. So, we have a number of items on the agenda tonight, but if you are able, please stand and join me in the flag salute. Or I say, "Join us in the flag salute." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm gonna do a shameless plug for PBS. If you are not watching The American Revolution, you can get it on replay on OPB Passport. It is amazing. Let me just tell ya. I've been watching it. Third episode tonight. Six nights in a row. It will tell you things about the American history that you didn't know wasn't in our history books, and it's extremely informative. And no, they are not paying me to do this. But it's pretty amazing. I was watching it part of this afternoon before I came to the meeting. So, tonight on our agenda, we don't have any ceremonies and proclamations, but we do have an item on the agenda for item number four, which is public comment. And before we get to that, I would like to acknowledge that we received a number of pieces of correspondence which, strikingly, were all the same from people concerning an issue that is in the news today. And I want to thank those people from the city of Oregon City who submitted the letter to us. And for those of you who are not inside the city limits and live outside but have an Oregon City mailing address, I hope you sent that same letter to Clackamas County, because that's technically your jurisdiction. But thank you for sending those in. We appreciate it. I read them all this afternoon when I saw them coming in one after the other. But before we get to item number four, I'd like to ask Chief Davis to make a brief statement,
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. There have been several written submissions, as you mentioned, tonight from the community members sharing their concerns with you regarding immigration enforcement. We acknowledge those concerns. As you're aware, immigration enforcement is a responsibility of the federal government. In Oregon, we have several Oregon-revised statutes, commonly referred to as RRSs, that regulate immigration enforcement, specifically R S 181A.820 to 181A.829. We also have a department policy on immigration violations. Our department remains committed to upholding all Oregon laws, including the laws that have prohibited local law enforcement from using agency or resources to detect and apprehend individuals solely for the federal immigration enforcement. We remain committed to focusing our efforts on community safety, criminal investigations, and building trust with all of our residents. While we continue to cooperate with federal agents and federal partners on matters involving criminal activity as allowed by law, we do not engage in civil immigration enforcement, nor do we interfere with federal officers carrying out their lawful duties. Our priority is to ensure a safe, livable, and inclusive community for everyone we serve.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. So, for those of you who have not been here before and done public comment, we certainly encourage that. These are for items that are not currently on the City Commission's agenda. If you do have an item that you'd like to speak about that's on the agenda, you'll need to come back and later on the agenda for that particular item. So, we do have a timer. You will have three minutes, and I will cut you off if you go over, because we have a lot of people that are here, and we would like to make sure everybody has an opportunity to say what they would like to say within that timeframe. So, I will call your name. I'll probably call two people at a time, so you can take the left side or the right side, or your right, my left. And there's a microphone there. When you're able to speak and can speak, please press the green button. That will give you the microphone portion of that. For those of you that have been here forever and ever, old hats, you all already know the drill. So, I'd like to call up, to begin with, Ms. Tara Wansall and William Gifford. You're not coming up, William? We're not... You're on this... I have a slip for you, so I've asked you to come up to do number four, after Tara's gone. So, please, we welcome it. I welcome you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tara.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tara Wansall, owner of Watershed Cafe and Bistro located on Main Street. I'm here to speak to you today about the impact of event-related closures on Main Street in Oregon City and the gaps in our current permitting process that leave local businesses vulnerable. Recently, I reached out to Public Works to better understand the approval process for these closures. And what I learned is concerning. Any event, for any reason, can be approved through a basic application. There's no city code requiring evaluation for the type of event, who is organizing it, how it affects existing businesses, or whether those businesses are even notified. The current code the city has in place simply ensures the events meet safety requirements. A fee is paid, and beyond that, the approval is largely automatic. There's no vetting process to ensure an event aligns with the city's mission or economic goals. This creates serious problems for Main Street businesses, which I can personally speak to over the last year. I want to be very clear. Downtown Oregon City Association, known as DOKA, sponsored events are not the issue. In fact, DOKA is a model for how event coordination should work. DOKA consistently reaches out to business owners early, invites them to participate, integrates them into the event layout, and communicates details well ahead of time. That level of coordination makes a huge difference. When businesses can plan staffing, inventory, deliveries, promotions, and when they feel included, events can genuinely benefit the district. The core problem is other applicants, individuals or organizations hosting races, parades, vendor fairs, flea markets, or specialty events, who are not communicating with existing businesses at all, nor are they familiar with our downtown. Many of these events bring in external vendors who directly compete with local storefronts, while businesses that are open every day are left out entirely, or worse, not even told the event is happening. The current requirement of the five-day notice is not enough, and even that limited space is not consistently followed, because there is no mechanism to ensure that an applicant actually contacts the affected businesses. Public Works confirmed this, and while they said they'd be willing to increase the notice to a 10-day requirement, the city doesn't have a process for verifying that communication. It is not DOKA's responsibility to step in and manage communication on behalf of third-party event organizers. Meanwhile, businesses lose access to their customers, and we continue to make the same incorrect assumption that more bodies in the streets equal more revenue. It overwhelmingly does not. Event attendees are not necessarily the customers our Main Street shops rely on. Many come for the entertainment, the race, the parade, or visiting vendors, and not our local stores. These vendors block access to our storefronts, and we suffer the losses in thousands of dollars, particularly on the weekends when events take place. At the same time, regular loyal customers avoid downtown because of congestion. I'm urging the city to fix this by creating a clear evaluation criteria for event-related closures, including business impact. Require applicants to notify and involve Main Street businesses with a very viable process, not the honor system, and differentiate between events that support local commerce and those that unintentionally undermine it.
Thank you. And we did receive your correspondence.
Thank you.
Thank you. William, how are you today? Please don't clap. Please, don't clap. Please. Thank you. William, delighted to see you. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. It's come to my attention that the Commission may be considering a process for redesign of our current flag, and I salute you for doing that. Also, some of you may be aware that last month, my wife Joyce and I attended the NAVA Conference, which is the North American Vexillology Association, vexillology being the study of flags.
No, we did not know that.
Oh, well, surprise. And when the people at NAVA, which is really an international organization, the guest speaker was a former Prime Minister of Canada, when I mentioned to them that you folks were considering a new city flag, they were ecstatic. They were ecstatic, and not so much about the design of the flag, but the process of how that flag is agreed upon is, I think, paramount. And so, when I mentioned that, actually, the Secretary of NAVA, who also happens to be the president of the Portland Flag Association, offered that he could help us design a process that could be done, that he has used worldwide. He has traveled to many countries and various states and helped communities design a process that would come up with optimal flag designs. And while I was there...
You came back with some swag.
This is the exciting part. One of the officers asked me to give you folks these little tokens of their...
And hand those over to Jacob. Thank you so much for thinking of us. All right. Awesome. Thank you. You want to hold one up?
I guess the point is that there is a...
Yeah, microphone. Awesome. Okay.
It's just a little tote bag. The point is that the man that wrote the book that I think I distributed to all of you, The Flag, Bad Flag, lives in Portland, internationally recognized for helping others organize that process. And he would be more than happy to give you an assistance, and I don't think he would be charging you for it.
Thank you.
So, that's another plus. Anyway, it's all good.
Thank you so much. Well, next time, I'll check your schedule to find out where you're traveling to, so I'll know whether you've gone to flag events or not.
Okay. That's a deal.
That's a deal. Thank you, William.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So, there's a couple of people that are gonna come up, and we did get your letter. So, I just want you to be aware of that. I was looking at the list of who submitted. And Amy, we did get your letter. Come on up. Are you gonna say something different than your letter?
No, it would just be the letter, but it would just be being able to say it in front of the audience.
Sure. And then Mike, come on up. I see you came all the way from the beautiful downtown Tualatin, so thank you for coming to our meeting. I don't see your name on the list, so I don't know if you submitted anything in advance.
No.
That's okay. So, go ahead, Amy.
My name is Amy Mitchell. I live in Oregon City. Did I need to give my full address?
No, just do you live in Oregon City. Your name and city of residence is fine.
Great. Thank you. Oregon City Indivisible believes in standing up for all people and their constitutional rights. We are your neighbors, your coworkers, your customers, and business owners. We invest in our community with our time, our skills, and our money. We trust that laws will be followed, that all people will be safe and treated with decency and respect. Now, an unsupervised, poorly-trained gang of masked armed men are allowed to terrorize and humiliate us, all while law enforcement watches it happen in silence. Why silence? Why are the strongest and most trained people in our community being gagged when they are facing our biggest threat? Why? Our trust in our local law enforcement to protect us has disappeared, because we don't know what side you stand on. Do you really want to protect masked men who don't know how to handle a gun properly and hit-and-run cars in our neighborhoods? Because these guys are only doing this for money. They don't care about laws or our safety. They don't care if they make a mistake. They don't care if they hurt us or you. They don't live here. If you want our trust, you have to show us that you care for our safety. Our community police officers should be the loudest voice when it comes to documenting violence and illegal acts by ICE contractors. You can still observe and not obstruct ICE as they cruelly and illegally target people, but you can at least use the privilege of having professional equipment, lights, sirens, body armor, weapons, and your voice to match and overpower the intimidating energy that these ICE bullies rely on when they single out people to mess with. We want to see an Oregon City police officer loudly announce to the ICE contractors that the Oregon City Police are recording their actions. Then the police officer can simply loudly list what they see: illegal chokeholds, head concussions, pepper spray hitting bystanders, dangerous driving maneuvers, horrible gun handling. This is the way to regain community trust and reassure witnesses that Oregon City Police and county law enforcement officers are on the right side of history, the side of the logical, hard-working, kind-hearted people in Oregon City, the community you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you're gonna say that in front of Clackamas County Board, too. Thank you. Mike?
Hi. My name is Mike Stetzel. As you said, I'm from Tualatin, but I grew up in Oregon City, graduated from Oregon City High School, and I go to church here in Oregon City. I have a statement I wanted to read. It says, "There is a problem confronting our community. One is not of our making, but one that affects many of the people in our community. Agents of the federal government are arresting people with no warrants, identification, or no probable cause other than the worst kind of social profiling. Are we, as a community, going to allow people to be abducted off our streets, from our schools, from our businesses, and our houses of worship? Many of these abducted have done nothing wrong. They are in the country legally. Some are even citizens. Are they informed of their rights? Are they told what the charges against them are? Do we want to stand with people and for due process of the people that have been taken and turned from protection to us? Do we stand for the rule of law or rule by force? What can we, as a community, do to help these people taken?" And some of these people, I know I've just heard of a story where one was abducted from his vehicle, and his vehicle was left abandoned by the side of the road with no way to have his family or anybody come to get his property. Things like this are happening. And what is we, as a community, can we do to help these people that are, for no reason that I can see, being taken? That's what I have to say.
Thank you. I hope, again, you will pass this on to Mayor Boobinick and the Council in Tualatin.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Last but not least, we have Jen. And again, Jen, we received everything that you sent in in advance. I did read it this afternoon when I received it. Yeah, as long as you got the green thing on and it's close enough to you, so it projects.
Fantastic. I promised to say something different. My name is Jen Mess, and I live in Oregon City. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm here tonight because what's happening in our community has reached a level that many of us never imagined. In the past few weeks, volunteers I personally know have been organizing teams to accompany immigrant children and families to and from school. They're coordinating sign-ups to walk with parents as they run errands, get groceries, or take their kids to medical appointments. These people are stepping up simply so their neighbors can move through daily life without fear of being taken. These efforts are beautiful acts of solidarity, but they're also heartbreaking, and they underscore the abhorrent trauma that our immigrant neighbors are experiencing. The fact that community members feel compelled to create a volunteer escort system so families can safely get their children to school speaks to how destabilizing the recent ICE actions have been. The fear is real. The trauma is real, and the impacts ripple far beyond any one household. This is not what a healthy, safe, or inclusive community looks like, and I know it's not aligned with the goals and values this community has published. Your values about equity, belonging, and supporting the well-being of all who call Oregon City home are not being upheld, not by you, but by federal agents. Oregon's sanctuary laws exist for a reason, and they protect due process and families. They protect public safety, and they make it clear that local government and local law enforcement should not participate in federal civil immigration enforcement without a judicial warrant. With gratitude for the statement by the officer who's present here tonight, I'm asking you to reaffirm these commitments by passing a resolution that clearly states that Oregon City will uphold our sanctuary laws, and that no city department or official will facilitate or assist in actions that harm our neighbors and tear families apart. I know that none of you expected to be navigating a moment like this when you stepped into public service, but leadership in times like these matters. Our community is stronger when every family, regardless of where they were born, can live, learn, work, and parent without fear. Thank you for listening, and thank you for considering what it would mean for Oregon City to stand firmly on the side of safety, dignity, and due process for all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, just to reiterate, thank you to all the people that submitted material in advance and to the Commission and staff. We appreciate you. Tonight on our agenda, we have some presentations, and the first one would be from the Oregon Department of Forestry presentation on the Emerald Ash Borer. And is that gonna be introduced by you or Mr. or Scott? Or Tom? I don't know. Whoever wants to do it, we would love to hear you.
Love Tom.
Hi, Tom. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. Thank you.
For the record, Tom Kissinger, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director. We have with us tonight Kat and Matt from Oregon Department of Forestry here to present about Emerald Ash Borer and its potential effects on our community.
Was that supposed to rhyme?
It's not supposed to, but it just happens to.
Just happens to.
And I will turn it over to Kat and Matt.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Tom, for introducing us. My name is Kat Bethay. I am one of two Emerald Ash Borer support specialists, and I am joined here today by my colleague, Matt Mills. Can everyone hear me okay?
We just can't see you.
Oh, fine.
But she's in the little square. Can we make her in the... There, yay! Okay, now she's in the big square.
Okay. Well, the next step will be see if you can see my presentation, but I do believe I sent a copy out ahead of time, so let me see if I can share my screen. Is anyone seeing anything yet?
Not yet. And it is Matt?
Okay.
Matt is there somewhere? Oh, I see his name.
He's also here.
Yeah, I'm here. My video is somehow not working. Sorry about that.
Have we seen my... I can get started if we can't see it.
Yes, we can see it now.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Excellent. So, I am here representing the Oregon Department of Forestry, and what I do in urban and community forestry is help communities get prepared. And today, I'm talking to you... And today I'm talking to you about Emerald Ash Borer, or EAB for short. So for context, EAB is an invasive and highly destructive wood-bore beetle that kills ash trees. Those are true ash trees, those that are in the fraxenus genus. Now, what kills the ash trees is actually the larval feeding. And it's not the adults that do most of the damage, which is actually, kind of makes this a complex one for management. Since its introduction in the mid-'90s, it has actually killed over 100 million ash trees. And this is the highest forest, cost forest pest that we have had in the Americas. So this is going to be a little graphic showing the rate of spread by year. And this is going to a county level. And you can see that it rapidly spreads from 2002, from its discovery in Detroit. In 10 years, it's spread to 16 states. In 2013, it arrived in Colorado despite a massive jump of over 1,000 miles. And in 2022, we discovered it here in Oregon. Originally, it was discovered in Washington County, but that has changed. So our status as of today, there are five infested counties. Washington County was our first discovery in that forest grove infestation. And last summer, we have discovered it in Yemhill, Clackamas, and Marion County. Unfortunately, at the end of this summer, we discovered it also in Multnomah County. And this is an image that features the locations of positive trap trees and/or traps in our metro area. All of the hot pink dots are actually buffers around each trap because the trap size would be so small, you wouldn't be able to see it. This past summer, we also had nine positive traps, including the one that put kind of this presentation into motion, which is found less than three miles from the urban growth boundary of Oregon City. This is thought to be an expansion from the Butte Creek infestation, that one on the border of the Clackamas and Marion County lines. So why should you be concerned about EAB? Well, one adult female can actually lay up to 80 eggs. And so this is a photo of... I'm actually gonna go back to the last slide for a second. This is a photo of the typical infestation curve. And basically what it says is, in the green section and in the first five years of your infestation, you're unlikely to see many signs or symptoms. And your ash trees will actually appear to be in good health. However, in about years five through 10 of infestation, this is when it's most commonly discovered. And during this time, you are seeing more and more signs of decreased health in trees, and you are seeing a small increase in mortality. However, once we move into that orange year, by years six through 10, you can start beginning to lose 20% of your ash trees in a community each year. And then, once we enter that last part of this exponential curve in the red area, urban forestry costs spike, and there is both a heavy community infestation as well as dying trees to replace. Now, an EAB will not disappear from the ecosystem after this because our ash trees are a resilient species, and so they will persist on the landscape. And if there is any amount of ash biomass for them to feed on that's living, EAB can recover their population numbers. So this is a photo from Toledo, Ohio, showing the very dramatic impact of EAB if you have an ash monoculture planted in your urban forest. So this is in 2006, before EAB was discovered. And this is three years later. Most of the trees are dead, and they had to be removed. This is the impact that EAB has on an urban forest. It can be large and with significant costs to both cities and landowners. And there are, like, fiscal costs, direct fiscal costs related, but there's also indirect costs, like increases in your heat index and temperature as you lose canopy coverage, which compounds the heat island effect caused by living in urban areas with highly impermeable surfaces. There are also human health impacts to this. So in Oregon, we commonly find ash in three different ecosystem types. One is in our landscaped areas. These trees were commonly planted in streets, yards, and parks. The other one is in our natural areas. We have a native ash tree, Oregon ash. And that's gonna be in our riparian corridors and wetlands. And our third ecosystem is our wildland urban interface, or WUI. And this is where you have a naturalized area that abuts against development. If we're talking about ash in riparian corridors, we are typically speaking about our Oregon ash. That is our only native ash tree. And our anticipated mortality for this tree, once facing EAB, is 99.95%, which means that only one in 1,000 trees are anticipated to survive. However, this is a critical and important tree for riparian wetland areas. And so in some of our areas here in the Willamette Valley, it is up to 95% of a canopy in these riparian corridors. However, those aren't the only ash we need to worry about. We also have to worry about our ash in landscaped areas. And so some of these, like the green and white ash, are American species, and they are susceptible to EAB. Our narrowleaf ash and our European ash are also going to be susceptible. So this becomes a problem not just for natural area restoration, but also inside of our urban forest. I also want to highlight that dying ash can be dangerous. All North American ash trees and European ash trees do not have that evolutionary history with this pest. And so they will, once infested, die within three to seven years. Ash trees hold a lot of water in their wood when they're alive. And so as they begin to die, they lose moisture and become brittle. Speaking with professional arborists, it is... I am a licensed arborist. But speaking at conferences with arborists who have worked in the Midwest and East Coast on this problem, they will not climb an ash tree after it has more than 30% canopy decline, which means that if you wait until an ash tree is dead, it can cost twice as much to remove. So the financial implications for this are severe. And this graph goes into a lot of detail, so I'm gonna try to hit the high level on this, but please feel free to ask questions. Basically, this graph, the orange lines are cost estimated of treatment. And the dark red line is the untreated decline if the city of Ottawa had done nothing. And they thought, at this point, that after its discovery in 2008, by the year 2016, they would have spent somewhere upwards of $12 million if they just responded to EAB and removed trees after they died, and they only kind of did this reactive response. However, that's not what they did. And what Ottawa found is that $12.4 million has actually stretched. And so instead of spending it in one decade, what they have spent it in is, they haven't even reached that sum total. And they have additionally protected trees by getting ahead of it and proactively treating your trees. They still have maintained 60% of their ash canopy. So the number one thing we recommend for policy is to stop planting ash and remove it from your approved planting lists. I believe there is going to be a presentation following me talking about current steps in the city, so I won't go too much more into detail with that. One important factor for you all to consider is that there is a quarantine for any infested counties. And this is not managed by the Oregon Department of Forestry, but this is regulated by the Oregon Department of Agriculture. And this restricts infested material from leaving the quarantine area. This obviously has implications for your urban witty tree removal and your, you know, green bins, your compost bins, that sort of thing. But any ash, olive, or white fringe tree material, which are all in the same genus or in the same families, that they can also be infested by EAB, must be treated, like chipped or incinerated, before moving outside of these quarantine boundaries. This has a lot of little detail points to it, and this is actually enforceable via OAR. So if you have any further questions on this, I would be happy to send you the bulletin on this. When we are talking with everyone about this, there are really three things that everyone can do with EAB right now, even if you don't own ash. First of all, the number one thing we ask is do not move firewood. This is a really easy way to rapidly spread it. And you could be going to the coast, you could be going to Mount Hood. And if you bring that pile of firewood just kind of from a random location, you could be moving not only EAB but other pests. And so that is the number one thing we're asking everyone in Oregon to help us with. The second thing we're asking is for people to keep an eye out for signs and symptoms. Our website, oreganeab.com, does have a guide to identifying what it looks like and what those common signs and symptoms are. And this is a good time of year to get practice on those. So come spring and summer, you'll be ready to ID them. And then, report EAB if you find any or you suspect you find any using the Oregon Invasives Hotline. There are some other hotlines out there, but they are as managed or regulated by the state. Finally, I did wanna plug that we do have a ton of resources available on this website, oreganeab.com. And any further questions, we can... I will put my email up on the screen, and we can go to any questions or comments.
So does anything eat them?
Yes, that's a great question. Thank you so much. They do have a natural predator that is released as a biocontrol agent. And that's a very fascinating process. We actually were really fortunate that's run through USDA APHIS program and then run also with the Oregon Department of Agriculture. And we were really fortunate to have a biocontrol release site in Clackamas County. So you can't spread it ahead of time, but what you can spread it is, once you know you have a population in an area.
So my question was, is there any species that eats this bug?
Yes, sorry. They will... The biocontrol will not eat them, but they will kill them by laying their eggs in them. And so they will reduce their numbers in that way. And so some of them... If you've ever seen the movie Aliens, it's kind of a similar process. It's a gory reference, but it's a good one.
I know. Let's just say, I know about it, but I've never seen it. I'm aware of what it's about. Yeah, okay, so I got the picture.
Yep. Yeah, they'll lay their eggs on the eggs or on the larvae, preventing that from ever fully developing. Also, our lovely woodpeckers will actually also eat them. But they will eliminate a population, but they can't reduce our numbers. And so our woodpeckers are about to have a field day with plenty of food.
All right, awesome. Any questions? Okay, now that we've got that in our heads, thank you so very much. Did your colleague want to say anything? Matt, do you wanna say anything? You wanna add anything?
No, Kat did a fantastic job. Thanks so much for having us here. And in the future, if you've got questions about EAB or how to counter this best before it gets into Oregon City, we're here to support you.
So we're having our own little battle with, I won't say little, but we have the... We have our Dutch Elms and Dutch Elm disease that we're dealing with, with our trees in our parks, a couple of parks. But I don't know, do we have any large... We don't have any large species of ash in Oregon City, as far as I'm aware.
So we are doing surveys right now to determine where our ash population is. It is gonna be in places like Hillendale Park, which has Mud Creek through it, Abernathy Creek, you know, those kind of areas. Our water quality facilities are actually predominantly ash. And then we're also looking at street trees to see how many are ash. So we're working on a mitigation plan right now. We're working with a lot of different stakeholder groups, including some led by the ODF team. And we'll come back soon with some more information.
Thank you so much. It was very informative. Michael?
Is ash still on our approved street tree list?
It currently is. That's one of the things that we're looking at in our mitigation plan. We're coordinating with community development, Public Works, Communications, to kind of get all our ducks in a row. There may need to be some code amendments to that to help remove that from the list.
And when treatment was mentioned, that's not really treating the tree. That's cutting down the tree and getting rid of it, right?
So there are different treatments. Basically, the premise is, it's called SLAM, which is slow ash mortality. Basically, you're spreading that cost over time. The treatment consists of selective removal of trees or injections. The injections are gonna focus on kind of like high-risk trees in high-risk areas, over streets, over trails, places like that. Whereas like, you know, forested areas, places that aren't really threats to the public, is gonna be more of like a selected removal.
Okay, but it is possible to treat the tree.
It's possible to slow the mortality. It's probably still gonna die eventually, but it'll spread it out over time. So we're not getting a large influx of all the ash dying within a couple of years.
Understood. Thank you.
So I'm trying to recall...
So, real quick, one point of clarification on that. There is actually an insecticide treatment that you can use on the tree itself. You do need to have a licensed pesticide applicator do that. And it also is a micro systemic trunk injection. So you were just referencing Dutch Elm disease, and that puts in gallons. If anyone's ever worked on that, it takes quite a bit of time. But this one is a micro injection, so it's only about 5 milliliters per diameter inch of a tree. But this is really best used by working with a certified arborist company or a local certified arborist, or working directly, you know, within the city infrastructure for city-owned trees for that.
So I know I should...
It is a treatment that needs to be repeated every two to three years. So unfortunately, it's not a one-and-done situation. But it's highly effective. Some of the treatment combinations can be effective, 95% or more effective second trees from Emerald Ash Borer.
Well, just for our listening and viewing audience at home, and I should know this, so this is another shameless plug. They had quite a program on OPB about the Emerald Ash Borer. And I believe they are... They came from overseas, is what I am remembering from the... So probably on a boat, or, you know, how things get from one place to the other, transported. So this was introduced to our country. It's not a native species here. Is that correct?
Yes. We actually think that the population in the United States originally came from a shipping port north of the province of Beijing. So yes, definitely not originally from here.
I wonder if they have any infest... Well, they must have infestations in China and Europe, I suspect, then.
Yeah, those ash trees co-evolved with that beetle. And so those ash trees do have some resistance. And unfortunately, ash have a worldwide distribution. You have an ash species that's not from that specific area, then it doesn't have resistance to that beetle.
Bummer. Okay, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the information. I hope that our community is, you know, alerted to this now because, like you said, you know, you've got a report. And if you see something that just doesn't look quite right, then, you know, probably better to call in than not.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that's kind of scary. Thank you, Tom. That was very, very informative. Really appreciate it. Okay, next item on Item 5B. We have an update from the... One of the principals of Level Development Northwest. Seth, would you mind coming up? And do you have a PowerPoint? All right, thank you. Appreciate your being here.
Jacob, do I just look to you when we want to move to the next slide? Okay. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Seth Henderson. I am one of the founders of Level Development Northwest. My partner Jenny Jenkins is here this evening as well. Two concerns that have been communicated to me over the last five years in regards to developers. Number one, we do not proactively communicate. And number two, the information we communicate is oftentimes not accurate, and the product produced is rarely what the photo showed on day one. So my intent this evening is specifically just to get you up to speed on where we are currently and provide information in a proactive, transparent manner. I know you have a very busy agenda, so this is all of three slides.
We are not too busy for you.
We... Thank you very much. We should be able to get through it fairly quickly. Okay, so I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on the county's history of the courthouse or their process. I think most people are aware of what occurred. The reason this slide is up there is because this is what was in our response to the county's RFEI. So this is what we said we were going to produce. And when I go to the next slide to show you where we are today, I think you'll see some similarities. When we met with the businesses downtown and asked them specifically what they would like to see on the site, they mentioned four things. First of all, Liberty Plaza. So it's their way to preserve Liberty Plaza, potentially enlarge and improve it. Number two, diverse retail. So additional retail, especially along Main and potentially within the plaza. And specifically, retail which is different than what currently exists.
And you might want to just explain that for people that don't know what you're talking about. Number two.
So in regards to the retail, when you look at what currently exists downtown, a lot of restaurants, if you're looking for different types of retail where people would come and shop an extended period of time, the top three that we've heard throughout this process is an ice cream place, a bakery, and a market. So those are the three things that are on the top of our list. Because Jenny and I do not run a market, an ice cream place, or a bakery, understand that's what we will work with the brokers to try to get, but that is not our forte. So we'll do the best we can. Third item was housing. So when you look at active, vibrant downtowns, quite frequently, they have people that are there 24/7. And so we are proposing the first significant number of legally permitted residences within the downtown area. And then the fourth item, of course, is parking. Whatever you are producing... Whatever you are producing, make sure you are providing enough parking for those uses. So what you'll see in this plan is on the left-hand side, if you think about Eighth Street, the elevation that comes up. So that is essentially a daylit basement garage. So it's structured parking access, uh, off and onto Eighth Street. Um, in the middle, you'll see the layout of the first floor. So at grade, so you'll see the lobby to the residential, you'll see the retail, the improved enlarged Liberty Plaza. The county's law library has a lot of their servers in it, um, substantial cost to relocate those. So they're currently holding on to that building. And then McMinnmans. And you can actually see the kind of dash lines in that middle one. Those are the property lines. So the property that we're buying is kind of this funky T-shaped. And then on the right-hand side is just showing the upper floors. Okay. So where do we sit today? And again, this should look very, very familiar. So we are in the schematic phase, uh, which will wrap up about mid-December. And that's really when you think about uses, massing, uh, structure, right? It's the, it's the early phase in the design process. So you'll see now we've got retail, there's actually a second, um, we've broken it up. So there's two entrances into the retail. So if I recall correctly, and I can't read on there, but I think it's about 2,400 square feet. Does that look about right? Yeah. And, uh, when you talk to brokers, the ideal size is about a thousand square feet, depending on the use, but for your standard retail store, it's about a thousand square feet. So we, we expect this will be two, maybe three, but most likely two tenants. You've got the entrance, so you've got the lobby entrance to the retail on the left-hand side. Uh, you do have units on the first floor, because if you think about it with each Eighth Street sloping down, those are essentially raised up, right? And then you've got four levels above that. So if you look on the right-hand side, you will start to get kind of, this is just a section, a bland section, um, but it'll show you just how the massing maybe broke up, broken up, and then the materials. So if you look at the lower section, that looks kind of like a triangle, that's as you're walking up Eighth, that garage is type one construction, it's concrete. Most likely.
When you get done?
Okay. Mo-most likely we're doing like board form. So as you're walking up, you'll see board form along that side there. Uh, first floor, you want something resilient, right? That's the floor that interacts with pedestrians. So that's probably brick, it might be stacked stone, but it's a more durable material. Then you've got kind of an eyebrow or a break above that first floor, which will be a higher elevation, um, in terms of floor to floor than the other floors above that. So then you'll have three floors, then another break, and then the top floor. So that's kind of the massing that we're looking at. You go to downtowns, historic downtowns, what's your material palette? Stucco, concrete, stone, brick? That's about it, right? So we're not talking cementitious fiber panels. Um, this, we will be working from the traditional palette that currently exists downtown.
So before you go on, you said that there are two entrances to the retail and maybe Jacob can point to the, because I don't see the second one.
Oh, no, no, no. Um, what, what I said is we've corrected it and there is a second entrance now.
Okay. I just thought my, maybe my eyeballs were like.
No, you, you were absolutely correct. So, uh, kind of as you slide from what would be east to west, there will be a, a door entrance. So you'll see the, the proposed demising wall with the column in between. So between that demising wall and the demising wall to the other side, Jacob? Yep.
Okay.
Right there. Yep. Uh, any other questions? One, one thing I do want to point out, um, we, we have gone to a couple other groups and I'll talk about that on the next slide as the schedule. We went to the CIC and the chair of the HRB, uh, had the question, which was, hey, um, we looked at your website and there's a lot of modern buildings on there, you know, make, something modern's not going to fit in. And, and I thought about that for a while. So first of all, all the developments we've done aren't on our website. We have a bunch more. But the other thing is, I go, okay, when was the last time a ground-up building was done on Main Street? And I think, I could be wrong, you guys can correct me, I think it's the US Bank Building that, uh, Jackson House is now in, and that was 1967.
And also the First Interstate Bank Building, which is next door to it. So First Interstate Bank there, the corner of 10th and Main, and the US Bank on the other corner.
Yeah. So, so, so over 50 years.
Oh, what about, what about Benjamin Franklin? I don't know what year, but yeah, maybe. Where it used to be Benjamin Franklin, then it was B of A, and now it's a.
All the banks.
What was it, what is it? Some medical office now, next to, uh, yeah, right next to Settlers Corner.
Yeah.
It's been half a century, probably. So, so I, I started thinking about, okay, what is the definition of modern? And think about how often the energy code changes, building code changes, materials for construction changes. And I was like, just abiding by all the codes today? The building's going to feel modern because it's going to be different, because we're building in a different era, essentially. So think about vestibules for energy sustainability. Every entrance to a building where your lobby is over a specific size or that first room's over a specific size, you have to have two double doors, right? You have to have a vestibule. That's something that, that currently I don't think exists anywhere downtown. So regardless of what the material pallets we use are, there will be a feeling that it's somewhat a modern building because it's a new building being built under new codes.
So I will say one thing, that stucco is not a traditional material for downtown OC. When everything was wooden and then it burned and then they rebuilt and burned and then they said, hey, maybe we should use basalt and stone and brick. So some of the stucco is there is, is more, much more contemporary for our downtown. It's not, not real atypical because of the, the moisture and all of, well, you know about moisture.
Yep.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Um, and, and part of it is also not only was the, what was the, or what were the original materials, but what today is going to fit in, right? What, what is going to relate to the adjacent structures? Last slide. Um, where are we today? What have we accomplished? What are we working on and what is coming up? So, uh, the DDA is executed with the county. Um, schematic design, as I talked about, has started, will wrap up about mid-December. Uh, community outreach, it says ongoing. Let's be honest, that never ends. So, um, we have proactively reached out to a few groups and I'll, I'll call them out here. Uh, we had our pre-application, um, meeting today, which went terrific. And I'm sure you guys have probably heard me say before, Christina's one of my favorite planners in Portland Metro. Yeah, had, had a great meeting today. I think there was three representatives from ODOT, which was a surprise, but yeah, it was a, uh, it was a very productive meeting, no surprises. Uh, we have geotechnical borings being, taking place, uh, December 2nd, and we're doing some hazardous material sampling in the building. Um, the basalt is somewhere between nine and 25 feet, based on previous boring. So we need to do a couple more just to figure out, is it, is there any uniformity or is there really that much, um, undulation? And then we finished the survey. Uh, just one thing I want to point out, we are trying to engage as many Oregon City businesses as possible to participate on this project. And, and part of that is selfish. Um, if you have somebody that drives by the project site on a daily basis and is part of the community, they're going to put their best people on the job and are going to do everything they can to make that project successful. So Centerline, uh, is actually the surveyor, they're up on Mulala. And we waited a couple extra weeks, uh, until they were available, but we thought it was important, early, engage as much as possible with the local businesses. Uh, we've met three times now with the Two Rivers Neighborhood Association, most recently at the Elks. Um, we had a social with the Downtown Oregon City Association where we ran through all this information. We've met with the CIC, uh, obviously City Commission updates tonight. We're on the HRB for January 27th. We will eventually get PrAC on the schedule, but based on previous input, I wanted to make sure we had this discussion before we scheduled them. And we will probably end up meeting with the OCBA and the Chamber as well. Assuming everything goes well, we are, uh, wrapping up due diligence hopefully during December, which means we would close on or about January 2nd. So if we don't find any challenges, um, that aren't currently part of the assumptions that are in our pro forma, we will close on or about January 2nd. We'll spend a month of January doing abatement in the building. We will deconstruct it during February and the first half of March. Um, all the businesses downtown asked if we could do this work during January and February, um, worst retail months, and you also have the rain to help keep dust down. Um, so we've, we've stuck to that commitment. Submit our land use application by the end of March, 120 days for approval, that would be the summer. Submit our permit in the fall, which lines us up to start construction, uh, as soon as the weather turns in 2027, spring of 2027, about 15 months worth of construction, which means by summer of 28, we have an open site. That's it.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments? Yes, go right ahead.
Um, mostly comments, but I, um, do appreciate this. And, uh, as anyone knows, you know, in my dream world, we'd keep, um, keep the courthouse and renovate it, but I also know that's not realistic. Um, here's what I want to say about this. I, I, the first plan, I, this is an improvement from the first images I've, I've seen. Um, uh, I think the retail component is really important, so I appreciate, um, in the first visual I saw, and that may have been the first second, I don't know what, but, um, I was concerned about the retail space being sort of set, set back from, from the street. So I appreciate the effort to, to move that closer. I also, in the renderings I saw first, um, it kind of was easy, and even partly before you described this, it was easy to maybe make the assumption that it would be one retail space. I think, you know, my hope would be there'd be multiple. Um, and, and just in the, the structure of the building, when you see the footprint and you say how much of it's the lobby, then you kind, I was at the first kind of disappointed, oh, the re, there's not going to be much retail there on the first floor. And, and that's a huge component, I think, to making the downtown feel and keep that, um, business kind of at street level. So I, any effort to enhance or to, to, to have multiple tenants in that space, I think are helpful in opening that to the plaza, which it looks like it's here. So I appreciate that. The only, um, the only question I guess I would have, and I, obviously this is, all goes through the, the processes, um, that it needs to go through, but I'm assuming there's not a conversation about changing anything with the current height restrictions in downtown, which my memory is it's the Masonic Lodge is the limit. Um, so, um, and I know that this part of downtown, I think, sinks a little bit down. So even if you have five floors, it's still theoretic that it's below that threshold. Is that true? I mean, in general, that it would be below that threshold? We're not talking about expanding that foot with the, the height limiter in any way?
Uh, I love the zoning code in Oregon City and the fact that they picked the Masonic Lodge and they ended the Oregon Trail and said, within, within a certain distance, we're actually taking height down. So yes, if you look at the current building height today, we're going about 10 feet higher than that. So one floor higher than the current parapet and it will be shorter than the Masonic. Yeah.
Very cool.
Just to respond to that, so when that was put in there, that was very, very deliberate. It was a combination of, uh, community members, business owners. It was a, it was a very robust process about what that height would be downtown. So.
Um, I guess one more question. The only other question is, in, in terms of going forward, what, um, what would be the process of the future of Liberty Plaza in terms of conversations that, that, you know, would there be some sort of visioning, planning? I mean, at some point before it's turned over to the city or would the city take that piece over maybe and, and then have a process? I know we don't know that that's a for sure thing, but the hope is that there's some public space there that might be.
Judy promised us.
Well.
I know she's not there.
People make a lot of promises.
I know she's not there.
I, I don't know. What, is that something that, that process would happen after?
So, so we have actually put in the DDA that it is a requirement, if the city will accept it, that we break it out as a separate parcel and dedicate it to the city.
Okay.
So our intent is to purchase it, to design it, to build it, paying permit fees for it, and then dedicate it to the city. So, um, we plan on meeting with, uh, PrAC to get their input. We plan on meeting with, uh, Parks and Rec staff to get their input. I think that what, what we want to make sure occurs is that this piece is standalone. After, once it's right, so.
Sure.
If there's electrical, what is that separate service? If there's water, what is that separate service? Um, so that it is entirely self-contained. And then I expect that city staff will probably have some input on, we don't want something that's going to cost a hundred grand a year to maintain.
Right.
So, uh, and we will, um, probably submit for some grants, metro, county, to try to get additional funds so that we can improve it as much as possible, if that makes sense. So, so already it's getting bigger.
I mean, even though you're, even though you're building it and so, but there will be some sort of process there. I mean, it would down, will they have input from downtown and from, or are we just going to see a design and that's the way it's going to be? Or is the design?
Uh, um, so in terms of, for instance, PrAC, right? So we're going to show up and we're going to say, here's, here's three options that we're looking at. And by the way, um, uh, Lango Hansen Architects, Kurt Lango.
Yes.
Worked on, uh, Clackamas Cove and a bunch of other projects. Yeah, he's, he's excellent. We've done a bunch of projects with him. We tried to bring in team members that have experience in Oregon City. So we are, we are not going to show up and say, we're doing this, we hope you like it, right?
Kurt's very, very collaborative and we've worked with him on a number of projects.
He's terrific.
I'll give you like a two-second Cliff Notes. So in 2004, when the county decided that they were tearing down the Liberty Theater, which against the city's wishes, they committed at that time that they would build this plaza. We had our wish list and we didn't get everything we wanted because we asked them for that part, but that was their quote unquote trade-off between, we're tearing the building down and we're going to give you this. Well, we didn't get everything we wanted, which we understood, but there was a commitment way back when by the county and Mark Gonzalez was, for those of you who've been here a while, remember Mr. Mark Gonzalez, he made a commitment that eventually that would be turned over to the city. So I reminded several subsequent commissions that this was still in the offing and everybody was, yep, they remembered it. So, I mean, you're just following up on the tradition of what they already said. And with, uh, working with the committee, that was one of the first things we all talked about is that the city has an interest in Liberty Plaza because it is the only sort of open space that we have down there. And obviously you are very aware of some of the backstory of that because it's, it needs to be, you know, welcoming, a multi-faceted place, but you know, it can't be everything to everybody. But the one thing we did ask them for that we didn't get, we wanted the electricity and they sort of got it and they sort of didn't. But the county said, well, we only have so much money, but.
If, if you've ever seen a caroler drenched to the bone trying to be merry and jolly, we need some covered.
Every year.
We need some covered area in that space.
Every year.
First Saturday of December, every year.
If you, if you see a band look at you and say, where's the generator? And you don't have one, yes, we need power.
Yes, that's, that's what they didn't do, but anyway.
There used, there used to be the Basalt Fountain.
Which got, there's a long story about how that got ruined.
It, well, that, that is expensive and it also has to be maintained. So I think one of the big conversations probably with city staff will be, does it make sense to have a water feature? Um, I think, uh, stadium seating would be great. So, uh, the other thing, just openly we're concerned with is making sure that it's active so it doesn't turn into a campground, right?
Exactly.
So.
Thank you. Appreciate. So you have a question?
No, I just want to say thank you for the presentation and I'm excited to see it moving forward.
Great.
So I did want to, uh, bring something to your attention, to you and Jenny. So there is a precedent for a developer opening an ice cream parlor. If you know of Robert Nato, Bob Nato, when he redeveloped the Galleria on behalf of his family, the Nato Company, he opened an ice cream parlor in that building called Roberto's Old Fashioned Ice Cream, and I will tell you, it was really good. I was working. I was working in Old Town, and I would take Max up to the Galleria just to go get that ice cream. So I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm just saying that there is a precedent for it. And I saw him about a month or two ago, and I said, what happened to those recipes? Because it was fantastic ice cream.
How about some bricks instead? Would you like some historic bricks? We can give those.
I have one from the redo of the Carnegie, so I could add to my collection. But I just wanted you to know, Kate, you know, you say that there's no precedent. Robert Nato did it. Anyway, thank you very much, we appreciate it. We'll look forward to seeing your proposals for the Plaza. And if you even want to do that before you go to Prac, we would love that as well.
Just one quick question. When do you want me back? Where in the process do you want me back? Do you want me to come back when we are submitting our land use application so we can show you where we're at? Do you never want to see me again? You tell me what you're looking for.
There's no chance of that. I'm going to see you tomorrow. We'll have, we'll check in with Tony and see what might be inappropriate. We don't want you to, we know you're here anyway, but you know, you're working today.
It's just walking from right there up to here, so it's all good. Thank you for your time.
Jenny, thank you, appreciate it. All right, thank you so much. We have item number six, we have adoption of the agenda. So what is your pleasure? Does anybody have anything from items A through I that they are concerned about? I see our DMOMO friends are here. Do I have a motion, please?
I've moved to approve your consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will say, I'm going to ask Mike later on, what is a Mo Reader Computer Consulting LLC? That is a very bizarre name, but you can tell me later. I looked at that and I went, okay, very interesting. Yes, I don't know if it's a, is it a person's name? Oh, it's a person's name, okay. I thought that maybe was some computer term thing. Okay, lucky person, all right. Next on our agenda, we have no public hearings tonight, but we do have some general business. I'd like to call up Derek Madsen to come up with our item A. And are you introducing that, Mr. Graham? Adaptive reuse historic facade improvements, and I hope we didn't keep you here too long. I almost suggested that we just text you when we got to your item.
Oh, that's very kind, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, Manager, and.
City Managers, ooh.
Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I'm James Graham, Economic Development Manager of Oregon City. And as you are aware, the applicant is seeking assistance under the Adaptive Reuse Program. Now, on August 20th, the City Commission conditionally designated London D Aesthetics application as a project of interest, but wanted more information with regard to its facade. On November the 5th, the applicant returned to reveal the proposed facade renovation. The City Commission did not favor the proposed facade rendering and sought a revision. And tonight, we will see a revised facade according to that discussion. And with that, we have Derek Madsen from Greenbox Architectural Firm, who will lead that discussion.
Thank you very much. So we've got a couple slides here, and it doesn't look like this. There we go. So, Mr. Wilson, I don't know if you recall, but we're located right next to the Masonic Temple and Me Familiar, between those two buildings, adjacent to the, adjacent to the bridge. As we look at the site, there we go. Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith had asked for a picture of the whole facade. This is the building as it stands. We have on the left the medical practice that's currently in the building. On the right-hand side is the vacated Don Pepe's facility. Right in the middle, you'll see a lamp post with artistic element on it. And up above, we have the mural that's on the building. Here's a historic photo of the right side of the building where Don Pepe's is. Thank you. As you can see, the facade, the original facade was set back several feet into the building. Here's a picture circa 2000. And there was an older photo there, that was a little grainy, black and white. We took that out and replaced it with this one. You can see there was a large fabric awning on it, and that fabric awning has been there for various iterations of the building for quite some time. The right photo of the Masonic Lodge, you can see a variation of a fabric awning as well. Here is the adjusted rendering. We're showing the existing stone continuing on. It's a gorge stone, and it's going to take up much of the front elevation. We're going to match the Cortin signage for the new businesses. We're proposing a glass door, replacing the one that's currently there with a wood door. There's glazing in it. Now, the medical side of the business, for privacy reasons, they have milk film placed on the inside of it. And being that it is a medical facility and they need privacy there, they do intend to keep that there. The other side, there's no intention of putting any filming on. So there's both light going into the business and from a street-facing facade. You can see what's going on. The far-right door is an access down into the basement. So to recap the project in general, right now, the building's right at 2,300 square feet. And the building is a single-story structure. The basement is largely unusable due to some clear heights and a high degree of dilapidation in the building. The program for the Adaptive Reuse Grant, I want to reiterate, this is not a facade grant. There was a facade grant program, that's not what we're requesting here. We're requesting funds through the Adaptive Reuse Grant. We're taking a building that's tired, renovating it to try and make it more viable. And this building will see the basement turn into various executive offices. We will see roughly 40% increase in leasable area in the building. And without changing the massing to any large degree, that's a pretty significant development for the project. It'll be subject to a Type 1 Design Review. We are increasing the building on the backside by just under 200 square feet, I believe. So on the right-hand side, that far-right door is that access down into the basement. The middle door is access to the retail that takes up the majority of the ground floor. And Donna's medical office is on the far left. So there were some questions about whether or not we're keeping the recess on the Donna London side. And we've tried to capture that in all of these renderings, that's still recessed. The building on the current Don Pepe's side is a zero lot line, and we're planning on keeping that as is. So here's the backside. You can see the shed structure that's extending off the back, that'll be removed. And what's currently a light well with some pretty significant water intrusion issues going down through the building, which in not too many years will cause failure in the building. We're proposing covering that with a new glass structure that would go up against the existing rear wall of the building coming down. There is, to the left of the door that we're showing there, a masonry and concrete wall that is existing. It's kind of a parapet to what's currently a roof. And so we're going to place glazing on top of that existing concrete wall to enclose that area. So we still get light coming into the building from the back. And obviously, a much improved rear facade. This image is looking from the Oregon City Westland Bridge. So our goal is to reinvigorate this 1908 building, make sure we have it for another hundred years, and recapture 1,600 square feet of pre-used land use space. That's the basement, that's the piece in the back that we're enclosing to create more usable space on the ground floor. That retail space will be opened up. Right now, it's segmented, it's not accessible. Many parts of it are not ADA-friendly, so we'll improve those aspects of it. And keep most of the building's integrity that you see today. A lot of it's been covered over through several renovations. There are a number of ceilings that have been placed in, which will be removed. So we'll be taking the ceiling from roughly eight-and-a-half, nine feet to 14 feet on the inside, opening it up quite a bit. And I believe, as far as the city's concerned, that certainly increases the tax revenue for the building. We have a historic resource that will be here for a good long time because of how we're treating it. The owner does have some interest in potentially putting an apartment that's set back from the street up on a new level sometime in the future. In previous conversations, I haven't got into that because I don't want to lead you into something that may or may not be financially viable for her in the future, okay? So that is not a part of this proposal, and it's not a part of the project as expressed. I do understand that has been shared with some people that that was her long-term intention, but it's not a part of this project, so I just want to be clear about that. The goal is to increase the existing retail, renovate it so she can acquire a new tenant that's suitable for downtown, and create 1,600 square feet approximately of leasable office space in the basement.
I want to start with Mr. Smith.
So I appreciate you coming with the new pictures, it helps quite a bit. I will, I have a couple other questions, but then I also want to let everyone know that on Donna's request, Donna London owner asked to meet with me. So I went down and met with her on Friday to chat about the previous conversations at our meetings, and it was a really great conversation. Found out that she's almost obsessed with history as much as I am. And so we spent a lot of time just talking about Oregon City history and looking at some of the amazing photographs that she's found of the building. So I really appreciated that. She did mention the, what you, I think, just referred to as the possible renovations of future, and seemed to say that that might have been partly why there was, we were talking about the recess, that that recess in some future may need to come back out to adjust for access above or something like that. So I think that's kind of what she was talking to me about. Not that it's part of this project, but you just acknowledge that. So that may have been some of the renderings. The only thing I'm down to now is, the other thing that you've pointed out, which is, was sort of misleading in the title of this actual topic because it isn't a facade grant, and we know that. The facade grant was another program. We've had many different adaptive reuse projects over the years that I've been a part of. Some of them have been not very effective, some of them have been really effective. And so where we're at now is a different place. I understand that the criteria is being met for the current guidelines of the adaptive reuse, which is why I think it's weird that we keep throwing in the title Historic Facade because if you put that in the title for the topic, that's one of the things we're going to talk about. Also, if it's in the slideshow saying that you're going to, and it still says Restore Historic Architectural Elements, but I'm not seeing any of those when I asked about it. So if we're using that terminology, then you've got to expect questions about it. So I think staff probably needs to just call this the Adaptive Reuse Facade Improvements, period. Don't put historic because there's no historic facade improvements happening. And then still in the last page of the slideshow, it still says Restore Historic Architectural Elements. Just take that out because we're not really doing that. I think it fulfills the criteria of adaptive reuse. I got a lot of my questions, meaning the owner helps a lot, right? And she said she couldn't make it to the meeting, I appreciate that. But being able to talk to the person, you know, behind the ideas too, not only that you, you know, not that you misrepresented in any way, but you fully get a better, bigger picture from the person it's coming from. So that helped me a lot. So I, you know, I probably will support this tonight. I think later in the future, if we really, I mean, we could change the criteria in the future if we actually thought that, you know, we wanted that, you know, the facade part. If the facades are part of the grants and it does touch a historic building in the future, that probably may be something we really think about because we don't want to see. I don't think we're losing anything because there is no historic facade left of that building. So it's not like we're trying to, we're tearing something out. And that was why I asked that question the first time because in some of those original historic facades, there was some belief that that Don Pepe's wood facade was part of that small, okay barber shop. And it's clear to me now that it wasn't, it looks very similar. So that's kind of why I kind of went through a lot of questions in terms of that. So anyway, that's all I really want to say about it. And I think in terms of the other criteria, it fits that, and I hope it's a successful project.
Mike, do you want to add anything?
No, I was going to make a motion, there's a chance first, and then I will.
No, appreciate you coming back and sharing those updated graphics with us.
Thank you.
Just want to add one thing. So yes, obviously, I've had, I've disclosed, I've had several conversations with Donna. I think we had, what I think that this does better is that in Title 17, it talks about, "Design standards for this sub-district require continuous storefront facade featuring street scape amenities to enhance for an active and attractive pedestrian environment." So that was my, you know, again, I know what's going on in the activity. So I'm hoping that the other side of the building does not have frosted glass because again, the way that pedestrian environments get activated is that you can see a little bit inside, that you see there's some activity going on. And we all already discussed which businesses downtown don't do that, and that's a problem. You go by these blank walls and people just want to hurry by them, they don't want to linger. So there's some time, someplace where they linger, you know, they're walking along and they stop. The building next door that's got the Realty Office, and it has always little weird, little interesting things in the window. And so people go by, see them. When I met Me Familiar, they're stopping and looking, so that's something. And then I mentioned the other self-care business that has some of that frosted, but there's about this much at the top, so there's light. You can see kind of the ceiling or whatever's going on in that building. So it's just something to sort of look at. But I think this is much better, thank you, appreciate it. I walked the bridge the other day, and I lingered on the side, the other side, and I was looking and looking and looking, you know, and again, you and I have talked about this. And you, we were total agreement that, you know, whatever they attached on the back of that building has never done it any favors. And this is going to be a substantial improvement in that. Plus, as you said, it's really dark in there in the back. And Donna and I were in there, we had flashlights because we were like, seeing our way. So we're ready for you, Mr. Richmond?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the next step in the grant process.
Second.
Commissioner Scott Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much, everybody.
We'll look forward to seeing the next, next whatever you do with it, according to your design. All right, on our agenda, we have ordinance 25-1016, An Ordinance of the City of Oregon City Amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Creating Section 9.36, Civil Exclusion Zone Applicable Within the Downtown Core Area Establishing Procedures and Penalties. And this can't come fast enough. Chief Davis.
Mayor Commission, good evening. Yes, this would be staff bringing back the first reading for ordinance 251016. As you recall, on September 9th, the City Commission held a work session, and the civil exclusions were a topic of discussion. At the meeting, staff shared with the Commission that other cities within Oregon have implemented exclusion zones into their municipal code. Staff reviewed the City of Medford, the City of Milwaukee, and presented that to staff. We also presented our parks exclusions and our exclusions from a public building. During the work session, the Commission directed staff to bring back an ordinance, which we are here tonight, that would amend the Oregon City Municipal Code. The Commission also presented it, was presented with a draft map that covered the downtown core area, just kind of a draft map. The Commission was in agreement with that draft map that had covered the downtown core area. They also would like, wished to incorporate the grand stairs and the elevator into the core area. So staff worked with the City GIS to accomplish this, and that is attachment B. They also created a legal description for us. I should note that it's not in here, but after the meeting, I met with Juliana Allen, Doka. Talked to her about it, to listen to what she, some of the concerns might be and the benefits of this. I also talked to her, Juan Stoll, and she had a lot of good things to share and what she envisioned. She had some concerns too, so to make sure that it wasn't very heavy-handed, right? And that we're making it equitable. So I did look and in the last five years since 2020, we have issued six park exclusions. So our staff is very careful. They use it when they need to. Since 2018, we had a pretty, a high end in 2018. We actually had 10, but eight of those were from one incident where multiple kids were fighting, multiple young adults were fighting in a park. That behavior we do not want in a park. One of those individuals was a repeat offender. So that individual was trespassed for criminal trespass too and arrested. So it's used very sparingly. It's a very good tool for us, but again, it's used very sparingly.
The previous?
I'm sorry?
The previous has been used very sparingly?
The park exclusion.
Okay, park exclusion.
Yes. Staff worked with the city attorney to draft the proposed ordinance, which defines the specific behaviors that may result in an exclusion, the outline of fair and transparent process for enforcement, notice and appeal. The proposed ordinance and civil exclusion zone will be an effective enforcement tool for this Oregon City Police Department to protect the downtown core area from persons who unlawfully engage in activities or criminal conduct that pose a threat to the public's peace, dignity, safety and welfare of the public at large by providing the ability to temporarily exclude certain repeat offenders from the zone. If you do look at exhibit A, I'd like to just go over a few things in that that the changes, just so you know what the different changes were there. Obviously, the boundaries is a legal description of the map, which needs to be in there. We really looked at like, the park exclusions are very effective. And the park exclusions were, the initial one is 30 days, right? So it's not too heavy-handed. It's for 30 days, it's not 90. The second one, if someone has one within two years, would be a 90-day exclusion. So we're trying to follow what we already do. That's been an effective tool instead of going straight to 90 days, which some of the cities that I presented had in there. The crimes and what the behaviors that we do not want are exactly the same from the park exclusions. Minus prohibited camping, right? That's protected, so that that's not in there, prohibited camping. But that the act of camping does not excuse any person from civil exclusions for other conduct that they're actually doing. So if they're down there. So that's, that's one of the key takeaways that we learned from the city of Medford when the city attorney talked to the city attorney down there. That was one of the protected things that we could not eliminate for. And then the chief of police will want to grant designation for officers to enforce it. And then the right of appeal will go to the city manager and any variances will go to the city manager. And then it's alibi is the exact same. Allowing people to, like if they're, if they're in there, caught in there and they're not one of the, one of the excluded reasons for their being in there, then they can't, they will be arrested for trespass or shall be arrested or subject to arrest for trespass. So with that, I'd love to open it up for comments and got some answers.
Gentlemen?
The only question I have is one that I've, I'm pretty sure I know the overlapping and the issues that are involved with the overlapping. Since I'm referring to the national park area, which I think is still city park. So we still treat it that way, but is there any complications in, in the property that's within that that's national park space? That we would, that are different than how we would treat?
Well, the only two spaces that are national park are the two buildings.
Right. So it's just the buildings itself. So the land itself is just treated as if it's as.
Right, and this falls within the park exclusion. So I mean, an officer could treat it different.
Sure.
It's basically going to be the same exclusion.
Okay, thanks.
Anything?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few things. I am, I am in favor of this. I may ask some questions that make it, might sound like I'm not, but I am, but I do have, I do have some concerns. One of them you already talked about, which is how often the park one has been used. Did you mention the library one?
I did not. We, the library has been excluded. I do not know how many times the library has used that exclusion.
What can you tell me about written policy or training?
Sure. Anytime we implement something like this, we, we train our staff. And this one would be very easy to train our staff because it's very, it's very consistent with what we already do for park exclusions. They just need to know this map. They just need to know that they are allowed to do that. Our officers make hundreds of great decisions every single day, right? And we, we need to leave it up to them to make the decision. Sometimes just saying you can be excluded from an area if you don't stop this behavior is beneficial, right? And that's probably why we see not very many park exclusions. So the staff would be trained on it. They're, they're in support of this. They deal with several individuals on a regular basis. And I know that Doka is very familiar with some of these individuals. But just, just this weekend is a prime example of an individual who decided to take it upon themselves to damage a lot of property down on Main Street, including some vehicles and planters and everything like that. Several thousand dollars in damage, right? This is a perfect example of this individual committed this crime. We do not want this behavior to continue, right? So that individual could, if we would have had that, the officer could have decided to also issue them an exclusion as they, as they're arrested for that. The elevator, breaking out the window of the elevator, right? That's another one. We had another one down at a bar where an individual was threatening to go get a gun and our officer got, went to stop him and got into use of force and our officer was injured, right? Some of these behaviors we do not want in our downtown core area, right? It's very vibrant, there's a lot of people down there. This exclusion zone is just another tool to keep that behavior from rehappening. And then if they decide to come back and they're not supposed to be here and they're not following any of the rules, they shall be subject to criminal trespass.
Are these, the park one, the library one, this downtown one, are they separate from each other in terms of the 30-day or 90-day repeat offenders? So like if somebody gets a 30-day exclusion from the library and two weeks later gets an exclusion from downtown, is that 30 days or is that?
Those are separate events and they're separate things. So a park is excluded from all parks. Downtown would be excluded from all downtown. The library would be excluded from the library. Just because someone's excluded from their library doesn't mean that they are now excluded from all the parks and the downtown core area. They have to, have to show and exhibit behaviors in those areas to be excluded from there.
Okay.
That would make sense if they were though.
In the staff report, and I think you, you said it, it says to temporarily exclude certain repeat offenders from the zone, but I didn't see anything in the ordinance that required repeat offenses.
I, I think if you look at like the 90 days, it's kind of referring to that. So if they do it, if they get excluded once, it's 30 days. If they get excluded, it's a, it's a much larger thing. But yeah, it could be an initial. But generally speaking, like I said, our officers make great decisions. Right. We deal with someone, not necessarily maybe exclude them, right? We warn them, hey, this behavior, we, we work with individuals a lot, right? We want voluntary compliance, just like with code enforcement, police, right? We want that voluntary compliance. So yes, it could be an initial offender if it's severe enough, but it also could be repeat offenders that we've warned multiple times. And then that 30 to 90 is the repeat.
Okay, thank you.
And how many is the repeat?
I'm sorry?
So is twice a repeat? Is three times a repeat? Is five times a repeat?
I guess it depends on the behavior, depends on the individual, right? I mean, there's some people we work with and trying to possibly get them stabilized or working with our community partners. Sometimes it's just one time and that they're going to be possibly subject to exclusion. So without knowing exactly, right? That's hypothetical. Sometimes I know we work with a lot of these individuals. We know sometimes maybe they have maybe some mental health components that we're aware of. And so maybe, maybe we'll work with someone more on those just depending on the individual, depending on the circumstances, depending on what kind of crimes they're committing, right? If it's severe enough, we're not going to, we're not going to work with those individuals.
Scott, do you have any?
One more.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I've got one question on the ordinance itself. And if it, if it's saying what I think it is, I'm not excited about it. So 9.36.040, person's authorized to issue exclusion or warning notices. The last sentence says, "In addition, the police, chief of police shall have the ability to authorize law enforcement personnel other than that employed by the city to enforce the terms of this chapter." That I'm not excited about. You're going to train your officers and your, your officers live under the culture that you and your management team have, have created, but not necessarily somebody from another agency.
Right. So this is, this is directly from the city of Milwaukee's, right? Which is the one that we kind of looked at. I look at this very specifically when we had the year of all the protests, the year that we had the riots. We are bringing in a lot of outside resources to assist them, to assist us to maintain the safety of our community. That could be a designation under various specific circumstances that I could designate during that event saying, if you witness these things and like, and they understand these things, right? We, we could exclude someone for that. That's the way I look at it.
Can you talk a little bit about what goes into that?
Yeah.
So like when, when we had the riot, right?
Yeah.
It's not like we have mutual aid agreements with other jurisdictions. It's not like they just showed up and went to the riot, right? There's, how much planning goes into before we put, like in that riot event, the, 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 the pre-work, staff meeting, expectations, responsibilities are discussed with that.
Yeah, I was the incident commander for almost all of those during the 2020 and 2021, right? It was a lot, it was a lot of work along summer. There's a lot of planning that goes on. There's rules of engagement. So when we have a mission like that, we have a big briefing. And on that night of the day that we had, this entire room was filled with law enforcement personnel from state, local and county partners that were coming to help us. We needed that. We actually needed way more than we, we actually had on that day. So we explained, we gave them the handouts. We said, here are our rules of engagement. Here's our expectation. Here's if we witness something, who can declare a riot? Here's all these different things. So that would be one of the things too of like, if we were able to, if I felt the need on something that was severe enough, right? That could be carried over and hey, we also have this exclusion. We can exclude someone. Per se, are they going to actually exclude them and give them that form? We'd have to give them that form, right? It's clearly, the form will be clearly labeled of like, this person is the one that excluded for how many days and for what reasons. There's still an appeal process. It still will go through all of our reports. I see it as a very select possibility. I don't want to limit us to not be able to do that, especially when we have, you know, I, I've seen it, right? We had over 65, 70 cops in here to help us maintain the safety of our city. And to allow, we designated them, gave them very specific, there are supervisors in charge. Just sometimes we couldn't be at every place at one time. So we have to entrust our, our partners are going to assist us. And they, they still have to follow their policies and procedures, but it's also an ability for us to use another tool should we have to.
And I understand that and that, and that was an unusual situation. Hopefully it won't happen again. And I can, I can get the need for that then, but that's not what this says, really. This, to me, opens it up that it could be used in, I guess, a non-emergency kind of a situation. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, so in, in reading through the ordinance and looking at the map and, and we talked about this at the work session, but I just want to make sure I'm of a clear understanding. So the exclusion zone does include the, the future site of the caring place.
Correct.
And so I assume that somebody being, seeking out services there would theoretically be granted the ability to do so under the variance process. Is that my understanding? Because it says presents a plausible need to obtain goods and services not otherwise available outside the exclusion zone to satisfy a person's essential needs. Is that correct?
That could be one of them, right? And that could, they also could apply for a variance where the city manager could direct like ingress to and egress from to that. So it's very specific. So that way the officer, and that's clear to them that they know, yes, I can come to do that. So it gives variables for people.
I think, is that included in nine or the violation component? Where a person is not considered to be within a civil exclusion zone if the person is within the exclusion zone and the person is, one of them is in the act of obtaining social, medical or like services. So I think we would, you know, the description of caring place is providing social, medical services.
So they would not need?
So even if you're excluded, you could come in to go to the caring place.
Okay.
If that's what they were providing once it's constructed.
Okay, that, that was just a point of clarification because I was wondering what would that process look like? And what would the barriers be to get a variance from you to be able to?
And that's, that's us seeing someone, right? Knowing maybe who they are, knowing where they're going. But it also like, could be like, we stop and talk to them and say, hey, you know, you're excluded. Why, what are you doing, right? That'll give us the, and obviously because it just gives an opportunity to talk to them, know that, understand what's going on.
So if I'm, if I'm excluded, I can still come into the exclusion zone if I'm passing through it? So I'm getting from here to Gladstone. I gotta walk through.
So the bus.
Act of obtaining social, medical or like services, the act of seeking employment or performing work directly related to lawful employment, attending a public meeting, attending a court hearing, meeting with an attorney or criminal justice personnel or engaged in activity ordered by a court, and the act of filing an appeal to an exclusion notice issued under the section, attending religious services or otherwise exercising a constitutional right. So we tried to carve out, even if you're excluded, you can still come into that area because of those reasons.
Okay.
We like straight line, no. It's a public, it's a public building. We already have existing language around public facilities.
The original draft map, one of like 12, and it was just very, and I, I heard the commission wanting to add the elevator. Work with GIS, this was the simplest. Try to keep it as simple as possible for everyone to look at the map, but also read and understand what those are if they want to. So just trying to keep it as simple.
My question also is, another question is, why did we not declare an emergency for this and read it twice tonight and then get it implemented tonight?
I don't have a good reason for why we didn't, didn't.
I just, you know, I think that, you know, since I sit on the Doka board, I know this is something that's, help would be helpful to them. So I hope we get it done as soon as possible.
Mike? The other thing is.
Oh, yeah, Denise, you're welcome.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, one of the concerns I have a little bit about what we currently do with the parks is that we have a lot of parks that, you know, we have families going to. We have people that walk, sometimes by themselves, sometimes with groups. And I want to make sure that we have the ability to be thinking about those types of things, our officers, when they're saying, you know, they might give somebody a warning, but you know, all it takes is somebody to say, oh, I was at the park and there was, this was happening and I don't feel safe going back there. So I just, I just worry about a little bit of the disconnect of having an incident happen, somebody basically being in fear for going back to that area because they don't know if that person's been excluded or they can't go back. Or it, it becomes a vicious cycle. I think I, you know what I'm kind of getting at.
I know where you're, I, I hear you.
Yeah, so I just, you know.
And again, it's our officers make incredible decisions every single day, right? And it's, it's just a tool, not, not that they're going to exclude everyone, right? That's, that's not our goal. It's to, there's certain individuals that their behavior is, creates a substantial risk or it's something that we don't want within our downtown core area. Make sure it remains vibrant.
So I know should this pass tonight, there would need to be a second reading. What I would ask is, again, should it be adopted? I'd like to just see some data down the road of how many exclusions are being used, like at an appropriate point where we have a good kind of solid data set.
Yeah, I won't bring back specific names of individuals, but I'll bring back.
I just like, I just like to know how often is it being used? How many people are being excluded, things like that?
Oh, you want before and after?
Yeah.
And to the extent it's helpful.
And to the extent it's helpful, I did speak with the Medford city attorney a couple of times about this before we started. And he said that it's the threat of being, it's the threat of being excluded that is far more powerful than the exclusion itself. And that they are not using it in Medford very often at all.
Yeah, well, as you know, they, they have, some of our social services have people get excluded. And then they leave there and go right over to Barclay Park. You know, so there you go. You know, they've been kicked out of one place for a reason, and then they go to another place that happens to be a public place. So anyway, do we have a motion?
Hang on, is there a way to address the concerns that Commissioner Mitchell has about the warning? To make it more clear that it's for an event, an emergency event? Or some, I don't know what legal wording to use, but something that makes that more specific.
Thank you, I, I was gonna, could we just say, in emergency situations, the chief of police shall have the ability? And I know then you're getting, okay, what's an emergency?
Exactly, so what's the right?
But is it, is it the, is it the chief doing it? Or like, if I had to sign off? Or is it just you think that it's too vague? Because like when, and, and these are the rare events, right? Like when Officer Libke was killed, we brought in multiple officers from all kinds of jurisdictions, right?
No, we didn't even have officers working. We had, we had other officers work.
So is there, because we didn't declare an emergency.
My, my concern, there will come a day when Chief Davis is not the chief, you're not the city manager, none of us are up here.
Right.
And we have another chief of police who, on a routine basis, authorizes officers from other jurisdictions to use this. And I don't want that situation. So I'm looking for a way that it is, in some way, defined that this is used in unusual emergency circumstances.
Could I ask you a clarification?
Yeah.
So I don't see how other officers would be able to use it. What I heard him say is that if he asks other jurisdictions to come in for mutual aid, they get our policies and procedures. So they wouldn't be coming in here without authorization and using this policy only if the police department gives them the direction, this is the policy or this is the code that we are having you use. They're not going to be doing it independently. And I'm not sure if I'm not hearing you correctly, because I don't see the disconnect. The chief of police is the one that's going to say, as he said, and whoever it is in the future says, person from jurisdiction B, we need you to help do this, here's what our policies are, here's your command officer, they've got this information, you get the information. So nobody's going to be using this independently. I don't see how anyone could use this independently. They only are coming here under the authorization of our city. They're not going to just swoop in and go, oh, I'm going to use this. So, and I believe that's what you said, correct?
Correct, I would, the way this is written, I would have to grant authority, but I also, I also hear what Commissioner Mitchell is saying.
I was confused.
And if we want to add verbiage of a critical incident, a crisis, an emergency, under unique circumst, I don't, whatever the commission is comfortable with, we, we, we'll make it work. I, I hear you loud and clear, I understand where you're coming from. It is a very rare situation. But it's, I'd hate to not have it in there and have to use it at some point under an emergency or a critical incident.
And I agree with that. I just, I, it just, it bothers me when we say something here and our ordinance doesn't reflect that. Because our institutional memory isn't what it ought to be in some cases.
Rocky will be 90, he'll be here.
I, I understand. I understand and agree with what Mike is saying, like, you know, Chief Davis, I think you and your force have a high degree of integrity. But again, this ordinance will exist theoretically after we're done, after you're gone.
But it says the chief of police is the one that authorizes.
Right, yes.
And he's, and he's not going to do it without consulting with whoever's in the city manager.
How do you know that?
We don't know that.
We are making assumptions about future.
I, I'm not, so that's okay. I'm just trying to understand where you see that this is, can be used by somebody without any authorization. That's what I, that's what I can't get in my head.
In addition, the chief of police in emergency, unique situations requiring assistance.
In emergency situations, I think covers it for me.
So instead of declaring an emergency, if we feel like we need the assistance, because, you know, we bring, sometimes we'll bring in additional resources, we don't declare an emergency, right?
Right.
So instead of saying declaring it, in a, in a declared emergency, giving us guidance that this needs to be unique in nature, like in, in an emergency type situation.
Yes.
Could you read that section with that word put in there? So you said it's 9, 9.36?
9.3604, I, I would suggest.
Excuse me, I can't even talk to them. 040 is what you're saying.
Right, the last sound. So I would suggest it would say, in addition, in emergency situations, the chief of police shall have the ability to authorize law enforcement personnel other than that employed with the city to enforce the terms of this chapter.
Get their directions.
Ms. Richter is.
Right, she's.
Wheels are turning.
Well, I think, I think if that's the only change proposed, we can read that in tonight.
Could we just read that in?
We'll read that in, and we'll read, I think, all of 9.36.040 as part of the, so as part of the adoption. So I think you'll make a motion, second it. I'll read the ordinance by title, and then I'll read this section. Does that sound all right, Jacob?
Yes.
And then we'll vote. That make sense?
And then we'll bring back with the change for the second reading.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance, where was it? 25 dash 1016, with the addition of the phrase, in emergency situations to, in section 9.36.040.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, let's have roll call, please.
Can we read it by title?
Yes, read the title, please.
Ordinance number 25, 10 dash 1016, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City amending the Oregon City Municipal Code, creating section 9.36, civil exclusion zone applicable within the downtown core, establishing procedures and penalties. And I'm going to read section, the amended code language, section 9.36.040, persons authorized to issue exclusion or warning notices. The chief of police is designated as the person in charge of civil exclusion zones and is authorized to issue exclusion notices to individuals for the conduct identified in section 3.36.030. The chief of police may authorize employees of the police department to issue exclusion notices consistent with this chapter. In emergency situations, the chief of police shall have the ability to authorize law enforcement personnel other than that employed by the city to enforce the terms of this chapter.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scott Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So we'll have the second reading of.
Second reading?
December 30.
All right, let's move on to the last item on our agenda. It would be communications, city manager and, or city man, I like when James said that city managers, that was plural.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Alex, do you have anything tonight? Commissioners, please.
I would like to add, last, I can't talk either. Ask to add to our future work session topics, a discussion of the street closures slash special events downtown, as suggested by Ms. Wanstall tonight. I think that is an issue. We know our downtown businesses are in a tender situation with the courthouse closed. We need to do whatever we can to protect them. And I, and I'd like us to have that discussion soon. And I know it probably opens up.
It opens up a lot.
It opens, it opens up a lot, but maybe now is the time. Maybe we need to take another run at it. But I would like to request that on a work session.
All right. Mr. Smith?
I got nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing to add.
I have two items that are of public interest. I want to let everyone know, if they haven't seen the Facebook post, the police stuffy dogs are back. And we now have stuffies for Coco and Alfie, which is really cute. I saw that one. And I believe we now have Ronnie. Well, we had Ronnie. Am I missing one? So Coco and Alfie were the two we didn't have.
Yeah, we were out of Ronnie's.
Yeah, we were, so Ronnie's back because we, we ran out. So get them for your holiday stuffing, stocking stuffers, they're super cute. And then the other thing I'd like to add is that the Christmas tree at the Pioneer Community Center has gone up. And on it are some tags for people that, if you are so inclined, pick up a flyer. They will support people who are in the, who are in the congregate, congregate lunch program and also our Meals on Wheels clients. And I picked up two today, I have a 73-year-old and a 99-year-old. So be interesting to figure out what I'm going to get on the list for Christmas gifts.